Madam City Attorney, would you please do the honor?
Yes, for the items that were on the closed session agenda, there is no reportable action.
Very good, thank you. This meeting is now adjourned and we will... Oh, we are on schedule to start our 5:29 meeting, but we will all wait a moment for Member Medina to join us. And I'll await confirmation from Ty and Sherry to let us know if we're ready to begin the Mesa meeting.
We're good from here.
Very good. The time is 5:36 PM. This is the City of Emeryville Management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting, and I'm going to read some introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. These waivers expire on September 30th, but there is legislation on the Governor's desk that may extend these remote meetings, and we'll be sure to keep people apprised of whether these meetings will be in person or online in the future. City Hall has reopened to the public with amended hours, which you can check out on our website at emeryville.org. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. I will turn it over to the Clerk's office. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. Next up, we've got approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Member Bouders?
I'm trying to find the agenda item here. The Cavalry License for Robbens, I've had a conversation with...
Oh.
We're still on the...
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on the wrong one. I'm sorry. I have nothing to report to you, I'm sorry.
Very good, no problem. Anyone else? No, seeing none, that'll move us to public comment. This is the time for public comment for this meeting, and again, this is the Mesa meeting. So we'll be coming up to the main City of Emeryville City Council meeting in just a couple minutes. We have a couple of short meetings to get out of the way first. So this is the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments.
No comments for this meeting, either written or otherwise.
Very good, and I don't see any raised hands, so I will go ahead and close public comment at this time. Next up, we have our consent calendar. Does anyone have a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
I will move that.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Passes unanimously amongst those present. Now we're on to action items. The first step is 7.1. This is a resolution of the Board of the Directors of Mesa amending the 2021 regular meeting schedule. This just adds a meeting on October 19th. So if there are no questions, I'd be happy to entertain a motion and a second.
I'm on a roll, I'll move it again.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion from Member Medina, a second from Member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That brings us to item 7.2. This is a resolution of the Board of Directors of Management of Emeryville Services Authority, Mesa, approving an agreement of employment between Mesa and Christine S. Daniels, the city manager, and authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors to execute said agreement on behalf of Mesa. This item is in conjunction with City Council Agenda Item 12.7. What this is, is we're renewing the contract for our very fine city manager, Christine Daniel, for whom we are all extremely grateful to have in this time more than ever. And we are adding a two-year term to her contract commencing on September 25th. That includes a 5% increase in salary, providing for $19,377 as a monthly salary. I will note for the public that our city manager has not had a pay increase in the last three years, so this is a modest increase for the incredible work that she is doing. With that, are there any questions from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I will check to see with the city clerk if anyone has submitted any comments or questions electronically.
No, I have none at this time, and no raised hands.
No raised hands, and I'll just remind members of the public that you would use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in. And I still see no waved hands, so I will go ahead and close public comment on this item, and I'll come back to my colleagues looking for a motion and a second.
I'll move to approve the contract and the resolution.
I second.
We have a motion from Member Bouders and a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And I'll just remind folks, we'll see this item again in the regular City Council Agenda. That's 12.7. So we can go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and when the city clerk's office tells me we're ready, I'll call to order the next meeting, which is the Redevelopment Agency.
Okay, and Ty, if you'll just let us know when they're ready in the room.
Ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time is now 5:44 PM, and I'm calling to order the City of Emeryville as Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. The date is Monday, September 13th, 2021. The introductory remarks that I read for the last meeting still stand. We're doing this meeting remotely, and the roll call still stands. We're all still here. So next up, we've got approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Motion from Member Bouders and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Are there any ex parte communications to report for the Successor Agency agenda? Seeing none, this is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments.
No comment cards and no raised hands.
I see no raised hands either. At this time, I will close public comment, and that will bring us to our consent calendar. Colleagues, if there are no questions, then I would be happy to entertain a motion and a second.
I move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And there are no action items tonight, so I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 5:46. And Ty, when you're ready, just let us know when we're ready for the final meeting to begin.
Okay, we're ready.
All right, so time is 5:46 PM. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the City of Emeryville City Council. It is still Monday, September 13th, 2021. And should I read the script again, Sherry?
Maybe, in case people have only logged on for the regular meeting.
Very good. So bear with me, everyone, as I read some introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. And I'll just note, as I have been doing for the previous meetings, that these waivers expire at the end of September. However, there's legislation on the Governor's desk which may allow us to continue keeping these meetings online while there's a state of emergency or while we deem there to be an emergency. City Hall has now reopened to be public, and you can go to emeryville.org to see our amended times. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. I will turn to the Clerk's office to go ahead and please call the roll at this time.
Councilmember Bouders?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. Next up, we've got approval of the final agenda.
Madam Mayor, I have a question on the agenda. Staff, can you give an assessment for us about the length of time that we expect staff presentation for item 11.4? It's the reach codes. It immediately precedes the committee appointments, and I just want to be mindful of the time residents will be here this evening.
Councilmember Bouders, this is functionally a second reading. You already heard this item, and so you're free to wave presentation. We just need, under state law, to open and close the public hearing.
Thank you for that clarification. I will move to approve the agenda.
Very good. I'll go ahead in a second. So we have a motion from Member Bouders and a second from myself. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. There are no special orders of the day. Madam Clerk, are there any announcements of commission or committee vacancies?
Just to say that in a little while, you'll be attempting to appoint, to fill some vacancies that we have, and that we'll be starting a new recruitment to catch up on some other vacancies that have occurred since we advertised for these. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Counsel, are there any special announcements or reports on meeting attendance? Vice Mayor Donahue?
I attended the mayor's conference on behalf of our mayor, because she was not available. There were discussions about how cities could cooperate with each other to better serve our publics and utilize federal funds. And at the end, Mayor Libby Schaaf of Oakland was trying to get the regional interests from other cities involved in the A's potential stadium. But there were some Giants fans among the other mayors. So while it was, you know, she was appealing for support, she got some, but it was also kind of funny, too. The other conference I attended was the Alameda County Housing Conference, where I've agreed to fill in for Councilmember Pat. But I will not be a voting member of that until September 28th, when the board of the Alameda County Board will vote on my approval or not. And the housing funds are doing okay, better than normal. And there was some talk about how normal is not that great because of state law, which constricts a lot of housing agencies as to their administrative costs have to be within a certain percentage of their gross or their overall budget. And I thought that was interesting, and I'll be attending the next meeting on that board.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to report? I might be stealing someone else's thunder, but I just want to let folks know that Saturday, September 18th, we're going to have an Emeryville Coastal Cleanup Day for 2021 and in honor of former Mayor Nora Davis. It will be at 9:00 AM, and everyone's meeting up at 2333 Powell Street. It's right next to the fire station, and people are requested to bring a reusable water bottle, bring bags, pails, a garden digging claw has proven to be helpful, and work gloves, and wear sturdy shoes, layers, sunscreen, a hat and a mask. And then this year, there's something new that I've already downloaded to my phone. It's the Clean Swell App, because if you've participated in these coastal cleanups in the past, you'll remember that we have to log everything that we pick up, and that involves like very dirty pieces of paper and little golf pencils. But now we can do it all with our phones. So if you plan on going, download the app in advance and have a much easier time logging. Okay, if that closes out special announcements, I'll turn it over to our city manager if there's a city manager report.
Very little to add. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for talking about the Cleanup Day. It's very important. For those of you who have had the opportunity, we do have a new banner up featuring Nora Davis Cleanup Day. So I want to thank Matt Anderson and Public Works, who was able to get that up there for this year. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, are there any ex parte communications for this, the regular City Council meeting? I'll call a member Bouders first.
I will appropriately, in this meeting, note that on item 11.2, I have spoken with Keisha Johnson of Robbens about their application for Cavalry License.
Very good, thank you. And that appears to be all to report tonight.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Member Medina, sorry.
Yeah, I have to remiss in that. On 11.4, I've spoken with Jeff Keer, and I got a mail from I.O. Com, the Trade Association, about a range code.
Very good, thank you. And that will bring us to the public comment portion of this agenda. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9 to be recognized. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have no comment cards and no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. I don't see any raised hands either, so I will go ahead and close public comment at this time. And that'll bring us to the consent calendar. Colleagues, is there anything that you wish to pull or discuss on this consent calendar? It's a bit lengthy, so if there's anything that you want to pull out, let me know at this time. Okay? Otherwise, I'd be happy to entertain a motion and a second.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll take the motion from Member Medina and then a second from Vice Mayor Donahue, and please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that brings us to the public hearings. The first three are going to be for Cavalry licenses, and we'll take them each one at a time. The first one is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the Chief of Police to issue an annual Cavalry license to public market. So I will go ahead and turn it over to staff to present on this item. Member Bouders, do you have a question or comment?
Madam Mayor, for each of the three Cavalry licenses, we receive these applications annually. I've not noticed any changes, so unless staff would like to alert us to a change in the application, I would like to request that we wave presentation for these items.
Very good. I have seen all of these multiple times myself, and I'm on board with that. So we're going to go ahead and wave presentation. However, I do want to give the public an opportunity for each one of these to speak. So I will go ahead and first check in with my colleagues, double-check that you don't have any questions on these applications. Okay, we don't. So the time is 5:57, and I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for 11.1. Again, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the Chief of Police to issue an annual Cavalry license to the public market. So I will check in with our clerk and see if anyone has submitted any electronic comment or whether there are any raised hands in Zoom. And I'll remind the public that you would use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom or press *9 to raise your hand if you're calling in.
And we have no comment cards, and I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand at this time.
Okay, so we're... I'll just give it another five seconds, see if anyone's going to raise their hand. Again, this is for public market, and I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 5:58 PM. That closes that public hearing. Now we have a resolution before us. Do I have a motion and a second on the resolution?
I move the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Next up, we have item 11.2. This is a similar resolution. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the Chief of Police to issue an annual Cavalry license to Robbens Restaurant and Lounge. Colleagues, any questions? Seeing no questions, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 5:59 PM. Madam City Clerk, are there any electronic comments submitted?
No electronic comments, no.
Okay, very good. I'll remind members of the public that if you're joining us via Zoom, you may use the Raise Your Hand feature to be recognized or press *9 to raise your hand. I do see one Keisha Johnson. In the speaker, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Aye. We just, on behalf of Robbens, we would just like to thank you all for being so welcoming, and this has been a journey for us, especially during the COVID. But it's been an honor and a blessing to be able to have worked with the City of Emeryville. You guys have definitely made our lives a lot easier. So we just want to thank you for just allowing us to be a part of Emeryville's family.
Great, thank you, Keisha. Seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6 o'clock, and I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Member Bouders?
Make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Bouders, and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, passes unanimously. That will take us to item 11.3. This is a similar resolution. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the Chief of Police to issue an annual Cavalry license to Trader Vixx. Colleagues, any questions? I see no questions. I will then go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:01 PM, and I'll check in with the clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comments.
No comments at this time.
Okay, and I'll remind the public that if you're joining us via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand feature to be recognized, or if you're calling in, press *9. And seeing no one with a raised hand and no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:01 PM. Bring it back to my colleagues for discussion or for a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Medina, a second from Member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Very good. That brings us to 11.4. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 10, the Energy Code, of Title 8, Building Regulations, of the Emeryville Municipal Code to amend the 2019 California Energy Code of the 2019 edition of the California Building Standards Code. And as was said earlier, we've had this presentation and ordinance before us in the past, so we are going to go ahead and wave presentation unless there's any objection from my colleagues. And then we are going to open the public hearing on this amendment to the Energy Code. So the time is 6:02 PM, and I'm going to open the public hearing and check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment or whether there are any hands raised in Zoom.
No raised hands and no electronic comments.
Very good, and I'll remind the public that you just use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom to be recognized, or if you're calling in, press *9, giving it another moment. And the time is 6:03. I'm closing the public hearing. I will bring it back to my colleagues. Madam City Attorney, do we need to read by title for this ordinance since we've already seen it?
No, you do not, because you read it for the first public hearing.
Very good. We just need a motion on the ordinance and a second, please.
I move the ordinance.
I will second.
Okay. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. All right, that closes the public hearing portion of our meetings tonight. Congratulations to all the businesses who applied to Cavalry licenses. Looking forward to listening to some fanfare and music in our community over the next year. We are on to item 12.1. We have some community advisory appointments to address tonight. We're going to take 12.1.1 first, which is the appointment to the Commission on Aging. And I'll check in with our city clerk to see if either of our applicants have joined us for the meeting tonight.
Before we do that, if I could just have a moment, my screen is locked up, and I want to try to get control back before we move on.
Very good.
One moment, please.
No problem. And you know what? Why don't we just go ahead and call a recess for five minutes so folks can take the break as they need? So we'll be back at 6:10 PM.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a minute. Presuming the clerk's office is ready.
I'm ready on our end. Sheri, are you ready on your side?
I can hear you, but I don't have a screen and I don't have screen control. So I'm not sure what's happening.
Do you want another minute to resolve it or do you want to restart, Sheri?
Yeah, I think I'm going to have to get out, all the way out and get back in. Sorry.
Okay, we'll wait for you.
Is she the host or are we going to lose the whole meeting?
No, I'm also hosting as well.
Okay. The joys of technology.
Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and we can see you when your camera's on.
Well, let's take care of that right away. Okay, so yes, we can move along with 12.1. I will let the council know that the app, both of the applicants for Commission on Aging have notified us that they are unable to attend tonight's meeting. Both have sent in written statements and so if the mayor would like, I can read those at this time.
And that would be great, sure.
Okay. All right, I'll do them as they were listed on the agenda. So I'll start with Renee Terlay. And he writes, "The available seat was left vacant for incredibly stupid reasons. I am undergoing a living science test of the Commission on Aging preparedness for seniors, 91, like me to use what insurers advertise as available services. They are like quick jobs when programs are needed and good performers are not understood by a stagnant administration like some city council types. At the same time, it should be known that technology is available with living science deliverables to remedy the situation. I am looking into Best Buy Health and Wellness. It would be a good idea to help BB enhance their work through volunteers from Silicon Valley and learn and share worthwhile stuff in the process." Renee Terlay. And let me just find the other statement from Dr. Wattman. And he writes, "Sorry, other commitments tonight, but I will be glad to submit comments for your attention and forwarding. Unable to do that this evening, so request council hold off on decision about any appointment of me until my comments can be reviewed by them. I will be able to submit them this week. Thanks, Walt Wattman." And that is it for the two applicants to the Commission on Aging.
Okay, very good. What I'm going to do is ask now if there's any public comment on item 12.1.1. So this is the appointment to the Commission on Aging. Has anyone submitted electronic comment beside the applicants?
They have not.
Okay, thank you. And I will give the opportunity to anyone who is joining us now to raise your hand in Zoom or if you're calling in, please press star nine to be recognized. And seeing no hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item. Colleagues, go ahead. Member Bowers, do you have a comment?
I was just going to suggest, Madam Mayor, I think we shouldn't take a vote on either of these applicants. And I was going to ask if you or the council select the next date you want to hear this item. I would like us to reopen the application period to allow new applicants to apply between now and that time. Thank you.
Now, I'll concur with that as the representative liaison to the Commission on Aging. Is that okay with you, Scott and Ally?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So that'll bring us to item 12.1.2. And we have two vacancies on our housing committee. And Madam Clerk, has anyone been able to join us amongst this group of applicants?
I'm taking them as they're listed. I'm looking for Crystal Alejandra's in our list of attendees and I see her here, so I will promote her to panelist so she can talk.
Very good. Crystal, if you don't mind, I'd love to give you two minutes to introduce yourself. And then if there are any questions from my colleagues, we'll go ahead and address those at that time after your introduction. So welcome and thanks for applying to one of our committees. We love having people to get involved.
Awesome. Thank you guys for having me. This has been an interesting process and just to be part of, to see what you guys do is amazing. I applied to the housing committee because I have lived in Emeryville or at least the Oakland-Emeryville border for about, well, over 10 years, 12 years. I've seen the changes that have happened and, you know, I'm a little nervous right now as well, but yeah, I have been unhoused myself for a very brief time and I just, you know, want to be involved just to see what affordable housing looks like in Emeryville, how we keep a diversity of different folks in Emeryville. And, you know, I love the governance process in this, in our little city. So yeah, I would, I would love to learn how to be part of it and learn more of how I can, you know, make a difference or change in, in the city that I love so much. So that's what I have to say for now. If you have any questions, I'm open to answering.
Great, thank you, Crystal. Colleagues, are there any questions for this applicant to the housing committee? Member Bowers?
You said, how long have you lived in the city of Emeryville?
Well, on the border off and on, back and forth Oakland, still 94608 for about 10 to 12 years.
So do you currently live in the city of Emeryville?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And you're, you're a renter?
I am a renter.
Okay. And what do you, what do you do full-time with your time?
I am a landscaper and gardener.
Okay, and you work locally?
Yeah, Berkeley, Oakland, sometimes in Aranda.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, are there any other questions? Member Medina?
Uh, hey, Crystal, thank you so much for coming to the meeting.
Not well. It's very broken up.
Oh crap, I'm turning it on. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
We're sorry. Um, I'll do my best here. Crystal, great to meet you. Love to see your face at the meeting. My question was, are there any housing policies or projects that you really like or dislike about the city of Emeryville? Like, what's your, what's your impression of what we're trying to do with housing?
Yeah, I guess I have a more of a question. I guess I'm answering that with a question of just, you know, with the new development that's off of Horton. Just, just wondering what, if there is any affordable housing involved? And I know there's like, I, I know there has to be some kind of input if somebody wants to build housing. There has to be some kind of fund for affordable housing. So yeah, just wondering, you know, want to get more involved in like knowing the ins and outs of those. Still very green and new to the whole process, but.
I have one question for you, Crystal. What do you see as the biggest obstacles facing folks who are looking for housing in the city at the moment? As someone who, you know, has been a few times over the last few years and lived in the area, what are the biggest obstacles that you see?
I would say, yeah, just unaffordable housing. The, just the, the market itself is, is just unaffordable for someone that works as a gardener, I would say, or that has, you know, not a tech salary. Yeah, I, I would say that.
Very good. Thank you, Crystal. That concludes all the questions that we have. We'll take it back. Thank you. We're going to mute you now and then we'll come back to deliberation with my colleagues. Sheri, were there any other applicants available?
Yes, I'm going to bring up in one moment Rodrigo Jacomet.
And Rodrigo, you have been allowed to talk?
Yes. Hello.
Good evening, Rodrigo. So we'll, we'll do the same thing with you as we did with the previous applicant. My colleagues and I will ask you a few questions if you would take the, I'm sorry, I want to give you the two minutes first to introduce yourself and let us know why you're applying to the housing committee.
Okay. Hello, good evening. My name is Rodrigo Jacomet. I live in Emeryville. Been living here for three years. Currently I work with the City of Oakland. I am a building inspector, sorry. And I also, I am a member of the Board of Nonprofit Organization in Berkeley. It's called Women's Daytime Drop-In Center, WDDC. And we provide shelter and food and we work with families, single women with kids. And I am currently the president of the board. And I've been unhoused for a period in my life and my experience, I also worked for the Housing Department at the City of Los Angeles, in building and safety also in Los Angeles, the City of San Fernando, so building inspector too. And I also worked as a general contractor, so I, I have a feeling for the public service. Every so often I leave public service, I go to the private sector, which I like to, but then I miss it. So I, I have a very strong feeling about public service and I saw there was an opening for the housing committee and I applied. That's why I am here.
Very good. Thank you, Rodrigo. So I'll, I'll kick it off by asking the same question I asked to the last applicant. What would you say are the biggest obstacles facing someone looking for housing in Emeryville?
Yeah, there is a problem of availability, definitely. I look for, I mean, the problem itself of not having affordable housing is businesses not being able to attract employees, people having to commute long distances to their job. As far as the problem itself of why, are you asking me why there is a lack of affordability? I didn't understand the question.
It's, it's more, what do you see are the biggest obstacles that are facing people who are looking to be housed in the City of Emeryville? So in, if there was an order to all of the problems that they face in finding housing, what stands out as the biggest problems?
Yeah, well, the main problem is availability. There's no land there is available, there's, the projects are built in a There's, the projects are built in a for-profit frame of, frame of mind, where only 3% in the, in the best scenarios are affordable housing. So I think a solution would be to think out of the box and see what type of public spaces could be thought to be a remedy to provide public housing, affordable housing. I don't know. I think, given the lack of land, we have to start thinking in, in different ways. How policies are affecting this, I don't know. I think it's a new stage, especially with climate change. The, the water level is rising. Pretty soon we're going to have to start thinking and, you know, how are we going to protect the city? I'm sorry, I, I went to a different subject.
Very good. Thank you, Rodrigo. Colleagues, are there any questions that you'd like to ask of this applicant? Member Medina?
Next question is like, are there any policy or project that you John agree with or disagree with in Emeryville?
I am sorry, I wasn't able to hear you well.
I'm gonna repeat it for her because she's, yes. Are there any policies or projects that you agree with or disagree with in Emeryville?
Well, I am very impressed with the, how, how fast and, and organized it's, it's growing, the city. I walk every day by the new projects in the city, by the railroads. I am not familiar with the actual policies of the city I am looking forward to. But I, I have to say that I, I mean, it looks really impressive, the growth.
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, any further questions for this applicant? No? Thank you, Rodrigo. We're gonna put you on mute and see if there are any of our other applicants who are available to answer questions.
Next up is Daniel Johnson.
Very good. Um, Daniel, I'll give you the same opportunity, two minutes to go ahead and introduce yourself and then we will ask questions.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Daniel Johnson. I've been an Emeryville resident for four years now. And my interest in housing has been a bit of a personal journey. I'd say it started about four years ago when, uh, my then landlord served an eviction notice for a house that I lived in for over 20 years. And I was drawn to Emeryville strongly by the, the kind of housing that we have here. And I like to advocate for all types of housing, including, you know, those that are affordable and desperately needed, considering the, you know, the nature of the, the housing crisis in the Bay Area and particularly, uh, you know, across California. I would also add that I am not a car owner nor a car driver. And I'd also like to advocate for the kind of housing that includes, um, people like myself and that we need to focus on housing people and not cars, particularly in areas that are transit-rich and, um, you know, that can include more bicycle parking and things like that. I also like that, you know, given the size of Emeryville, we can really punch above our weight and serve as a good model to neighboring cities when it comes to, uh, you know, the, the kinds of housing that we're building, you know, with regard to density and building it near transit and encouraging people not to be dependent on cars. Lastly, I'd like to say that I, I think our policy should be driven by,
Allow your time.
Should be driven by neighborhood input and advice.
Very good. Thank you, Daniel. Um, so we'll go ahead and ask some questions of you. I'll kick it off. What are the biggest obstacles facing someone seeking housing in the City of Emeryville?
Well, one, supply. We, we have very little, uh, you know, in terms of housing for sale. And, um, you know, similarly, rental prices are, are high. So, you know, we, we need more affordable housing. I'd say we really need more, you know, all different kinds of housing, market rate affordable housing, supportive housing, all different types to serve all the different needs for our residents.
Very good. Um, I, uh, with your indulgence, Member Medina, I'll ask your question, which are there any housing policies or projects that you like or dislike in the City of Emeryville? And tell us about that.
Well, I have to say I was particularly pleased with Estrella Vista. That's, I think that's a really great accomplishment. You know, a, a building with, with all affordable housing. And I also like the, um, the development going up on Horton Street, the Sherman Williams Development. That's, uh, that's great. And it's, it's really good to see that existing buildings, you know, particularly with, um, an historical element and with, um, with older architecture are being preserved and that we can include those in, um, in new projects.
Colleagues, are there any other questions that you'd like to ask of this applicant? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Daniel. We're gonna go ahead and put you on mute. And is our final applicant available today, Sherri?
He is. Martin Leon.
Very good. Welcome, Martin. We'll go ahead and give you two minutes to introduce yourself and then we'll ask you the, um, the questions that we have of the applicant.
Great. Thanks for your time. Uh, council members, so my name is Martin Long and I, my day job is actually as an acquisition, some planning manager over at Bridge Housing, which is a nonprofit affordable housing developer, a manager based in San Francisco. We work all over the Bay Area, including here in the East Bay. And I think, you know, when I first moved to Emeryville, one of the things that really struck me, as I'm coming off the off-ramp actually on Shaw Mountain Street, is the construction site immediately next to Encamlet, um, right there, pretty close to where I live right now. And I think that site is really the perfect juxtaposition of the housing crisis that we're facing, not only in Emeryville, but really all over the entire Bay Area and arguably, you know, the entire country. We work up and down the West Coast. I work a lot in Portland, Seattle and LA as well. So see a lot of the same problems. And I think Emeryville really has a big opportunity to make a big difference. When I first looked at, um, the draft housing element from staff, I was really shocked that we have $14.5 million in impact fees and housing bond for Measure C back in 2018 available. And I think we're, you know, very much at a pivotal moment where how we decide to spend this $14.5 million could make a big difference for the city for the rest of East Bay over the next two to three years. I've seen firsthand as a nonprofit affordable housing developer, how difficult it is to get things built. There is no entitlement process, construction costs, highly competitive state funding. And I think, um, any project, right, could have anywhere from 10 to 15 different funding sources. And there's only so much that, you know, as a city we can control. But there's a lot that we could do to kind of build up our partnerships with other landowners, with the state,
Just two minutes.
Housing Authority, um, to really make a big difference. And I look forward to hopefully volunteering some of my time to help make that difference.
Thank you, Martin. Um, colleagues, do we have questions for Mr. Long? Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and ask on her behalf, um, Member Medina's question. Are there any specific developments or policies that, um, that jive with you in the City of Emeryville that you've noticed? And tell us about that.
Yeah, I think the thing that really impressed me the most was definitely the Measure C housing bond for a city of its size. Definitely punching way above our leagues compared to even Oakland, Berkeley. So I think we could make a huge difference there by spending that money intelligently and allocating it to the right people. And, um, I think something that really struck me was, you know, the availability of land. Just to South Christie Park, I think that's a public market, our city-owned sites. I think, I think, and with Daniel, who just mentioned the Sherman Williams site. There's just so much development going on and so much opportunity. And if we are able to execute, you know, the right policies and appropriate funding the right way, I think we can get a lot done. Something that is also a little weird is I think a lot of the market rate apartments next door. I'm not gonna name names, but we can all try to figure out who the corporate owners are. All the big real estate investment trusts are out there. You know, a lot of these buildings are probably, you know, a third empty or half-empty at the moment because they don't want to rent to folks who are, you know, very low income or even of moderate income or middle income. Because they're really trying to get, you know, the home book network or, you know, I think pay the highest dollar. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there as well with council meeting, um, council member making this question. Maybe partnering with Housing Authority of the Cape County to potentially get more Section 8 voucher holders into buildings like that. Or with other more friendly landlords to, um, send people into housing more immediately before we can build something from the ground up.
Great. Thank you. Number vouchers, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are you familiar with the Emeryville Housing Expenditure Plan for Measure C? And if so, what are your thoughts?
Um, I will admit I haven't read it back-to-back yet, but I think, um, no, I think there's a mix of Measure C, impact fees. I think, I don't know if you guys still have your allocation of County A1 funding yet and whether that's been fully allocated. But I think there really needs to be a more targeted approach. So for example, you know, is the city looking to target middle-income housing? Are we looking to serve, you know, formerly homeless folks? Are we looking to serve low-income folks, extremely low-income folks? I think having the Housing Committee as well as community members, as well as council members, opine and better define those policies and be more specifics about who we're trying to serve and how we're trying to serve them could be extremely helpful. There is a lot of, you know, a whole range of developers out there in the East Bay. Abaltsea, EH, Saha, Bridges amongst one of them. We all have different kind of strengths and weaknesses. And I think the more specific the city can get, the better outcomes we'll get. And the more bang you can get for a buck.
And my question is, what are the biggest obstacles facing, um, anyone who's looking for housing in the City of Emeryville right now?
Yeah, I think Crystal and Rodrigo and Dana really hit it, right? It's really all about supply here. But I think what really kind of disgusts me the most is there's actually a lot of supply that is now just sitting vacant because they don't want to rent to certain folks. So I think that's a bit of a expectation gap here. I, I consider that a structural barrier. It's not something that the City of Emeryville can really solve by itself. It gets into, I think, you know, constitutional issues, you know, you can't take private property away from somebody and force somebody to rent their property to somebody. But I think, you know, there are other things that we could do, such as working with the Housing Authority to potentially educate landlords about Section 8 programs, utilize existing vouchers. I think what the city can do a lot though, within its control is when it comes to streamlining the entitlement processes, permitting processes, making sure that we have enough staff and capacity to process permits as they come along. And then also when it comes to allocating $14.5 million, an RFP, right, a cost proposal can take anywhere from six to 18 months. You know, that is another process that could be streamlined.
Martin, can you?
I think there's stuff that we could do within our control.
Can you clarify what, um, $14.5 million, your, what pot you're talking about?
I'm a little green here, but I think based on the draft housing elements, there's like a combination of impact fees, housing bond dollars, um, and County A1 dollars that could be spent on housing. But I could be wrong.
Okay, thank you. Um, colleagues, are there any other questions for, um, this applicant? All right. Thank you, Martin. Oh, Member Donahue, go ahead.
Bridge Housing has made some good buildings for all kinds of uses in Emeryville. Would you be precluded from advocating for Bridge Housing? Or how, how do you imagine recusing yourself on some votes but still not having a conflict? When on the, if we appoint you?
Yeah, that's a really great question and it's probably one of the first things I thought about. So I think, um, when it comes to specific project-level decisions or funding decisions, I think absolutely like I should not be able to have input on that as a committee member. That would be a very direct conflict of interest. But when it comes to other elements, housing policy, that does not have anything to do with funding or the selection of developer or even the development of policy that could in turn, um, lead to the selection of developers. I think those are the kind of high-level things that we'd love to contribute to. But whenever, I think, I'll listen to whatever the General Counsel for the City advised me to do or Housing Committee staff members advised me to do. But my personal take is if there's anything that has to do with specific developers, specific projects, which is like funding decisions, I should just recuse myself completely to avoid any real or perceived conflicts of interest. And actually, Councilmember Martinez, I did look up the housing element just now. I think it looks like it's $50 million that the housing bond, that's what the size of it is. And the 14.5 is all the other pots that are outside the housing bond. So the impact fees, A1 funds, and other resources is 14.5 on top of 50.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Martin. And colleagues will, actually will, I will, Martin, we're gonna put you on mute. Thank you for your answers. I'm gonna check in with the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted any electronic public comment on this item. And then we will check to see if anyone has their hands raised from the public. If you're joining us via Zoom, use the raise hand feature. Or if you're calling in, press star nine to be recognized. But first we'll check for electronic comments.
Uh, no electronic comments.
Okay. And I am not seeing any hands raised. So I will go ahead and bring this back to my colleagues for deliberation. I, hold on just one second. There we go. Um, I serve as the liaison to this committee and I think we've, um, we've got some good, strong memberships there. But I liked a lot of what I heard tonight. I think it's, um, really amazing that we had a couple of applicants with lived experience. And I know, um, that hearing from people with lived experience is really valued in housing matters, you know, in the county and in the state, and it should be in Emeryville as well. Not to mention increasing the diversity, um, of our, uh, committee, I think is important as well. And, um, you know, there was an applicant who mentioned, um, consideration of transit issues. So I, for, for different reasons, I liked all of these candidates. And whoever we picked tonight, I hope the remainder of you will, please, 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 keep your applications in the well because we know, as our city clerk very well knows, these committees often experience vacancies for a variety of reasons. And I, for different reasons, I would be, as the liaison, I would be happy to see any of you in our Housing Committee meetings. And I'd also encourage those who don't get appointed tonight, please attend a Housing Committee meeting because they're a really good place to get information on what the committee actually does and how it functions. So, um, with that, I will be happy to bring in- So with that, I will be happy to bring it back to my colleagues for any discussion before we put forward a motion. Anyone looking for anything in particular to add to our Housing Committee mix? If you just leave me alone, I'll make a motion, so.
Just note that the current composition of the committee is seven women and no men.
Correct. A little echo with Amber. Do you mind moving to the microphone? There you go. Okay, that is correct. So if there are no further comments, I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see if it sticks to the wall. I am interested in appointing, gosh, again, I say this with all due respect to everyone who applied, and so much appreciation for all of you for joining us in a Zoom meeting tonight and taking time out of your day to do so. But I am going to make a motion for the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville to appoint Rodrigo Jacobe as a community member to serve on the Housing Committee for a term commencing immediately and ending June 30th, 2022, and to appoint Martin Lum as a community member to serve on the Housing Committee for a term commencing immediately and ending June 30th, 2023, and amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I'm going to note that Daniel Johnson had the Cliff Notes version on Ally and John, because he spoke our ling, our love language about the intersectionality of transit. So Daniel, that was your cue from Councilmember Medina, that the two of us really liked your application, and we will probably be going along with the mayor's motion this evening. But as the mayor has mentioned, there are going to likely be other openings this year, so to you and Crystal, please keep your applications in the, in the bucket so that we can revisit you in the next meeting.
Please, 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 and I hope to see you as attendees at the next Housing Committee meeting as well. So we have a motion for myself and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Vouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you again. A deep heartfelt thank you to all of the applicants. I'd like to see your applicants stay in the hopper for the next round as well, so please take that from me. Okay, that moves us to item twelve point two.
And Mayor Martinez, I apologize. We are riddled with technical difficulties. I have to hop off again real quick, and I'll be right back. Sorry.
Very good. We'll take a brief recess and wait for you to do that.
Before you do that, Madam Mayor, I know she's hopping off, but just as a question for clarifying for the Commission on Aging, can we agree what date staff will list the opening till, so that the public knows how long they can apply for that position if they want to?
Yes. Ty, would you be able to answer for us when the next application period closes, so it'll fall in the next batch of applications?
I believe we need to provide forty-five days, so let me do the quick math on this. Give me one second.
I see Lorraine has her hand raised.
We can answer it.
I will go ahead and have her answer that question.
Can you unmute Lorraine?
Yes. She's available.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So we were thinking about opening up a recruitment at the beginning of October, so that would probably place the City Council meeting, I believe, the first meeting of December, because the zoo has to have forty-five days to be created.
Very good. And we only have one vacancy on that committee, and we haven't had an issue with quorum, so I think that's fine.
Okay.
So it's okay. Thank you for that direction. So we're okay with just doing it as part of Sheri and Lorraine's next listing for the Commission on Aging, and we'll have that vote then in December. Thank you.
Very good.
And I'm back.
Very good. Sheri, we just were confirming that the, the, the next batch of applicants for the Commission on Aging would happen, would coincide with your next review, opening for every, every committee.
That's right. We'll add, we'll add that to our recruitment.
Very good. Thank you. Are we ready to move on to item twelve point two?
Yes, and I'm going to bring up, please raise your hand among Chad, Amber, or Charlie, who's giving this report. Amber, it looks like, okay.
Very good. Welcome, Amber, and this is item twelve point two. We will be considering the Public Art Committee's recommendation to approve a design proposal for a mural. So take it away, Amber.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I am here tonight to present to you a item for a mural on private property at fourteen fifty Sherwin, funded by the city. I should also note that the artist that is recommended for this project is available for any questions, Nigel Subson, and I think he's going to just raise his hand. Not that I think he's expecting to speak now, but just so he's identified in the list about attendees. And whenever I have a presentation for you tonight, I think Sheri would be bringing that up, and I'm happy to go over that as it comes up, or am I missing that it's already up?
It's not, and I will have it up in a moment. Because I had to log off, everything I had already prepared went away, and so I'm sorry. So I apologize.
Just give some background while we're waiting. This site is at fourteen one, fourteen fifty-one Sherwin, and it is literally across from the housing development that has been referenced multiple times by our housing applicants. It is adjacent to the Steelwave commercial building. You'll, you'll see that in the presentation, and was a priority of the Subcommittee for the PAC on selecting a second site in the inaugural mural program because of its juxtaposition of existing housing, new housing, and in the context of COVID, they picked the theme of neighborhood by the bay, a place to call home, and the thought was to really honor the mixed use of Emeryville, but that there are people living their lives within each of these buildings and enjoying the space within it.
Amber, I have made you a co-host. You can, if you have your presentation handy right there, you can share your own screen.
I can do that. Let me get it as a actual slideshow. I think we're good to go now, if everyone's seeing my screen and can still hear me.
Yes.
Making a difference to this theme, and here you see on, in the primary, literally the street sign Sherwin and Horton, and you can see that construction fence to Sherwin Lines across the street. On a map, same location, so Double Rainbow is the tenant in the building directly across the street, and you can see that large site just north of it. It is on the facade, closest to the corner. It's made up of four panels, one that has an existing trellis on it. That wall is thirty feet tall, and we're talking about going seventy-six feet wide across those four panels. So over two thousand square feet commission. Broken up into the larger section that will be paint directly onto the wall, scissor lift will be used to get up to the top of that, and then some of the painting over that trellis, and then plywood to be mounted directly to it.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yes. Sorry, this is the city attorney. I believe we may have a conflict of interest, and so we'd like to take care of that right now.
Yeah. I, I'm Madam Mayor with you, and sorry, Amber, to interrupt your presentation. I just had a communication with the city attorney. I believe that this project, it wasn't listed in my conflicts page anywhere, but I believe that this project is within five hundred feet of my home, and so out of an abundance of caution, I would like to publicly state that I live at forty-two sixty Hallack Street in Emeryville, California, as the property owner there, and without confirmation, I'm going to assume I live within five hundred feet of the site for this mural, and this mural may affect my property value, so I would like to voluntarily recuse myself, and I'm going to ask Sheri to demote me from the panelist position for the balance of this presentation.
Very good. Thank you. We'll see you when this presentation is over.
Apologies, we didn't do that sooner.
All right, I've just bumped you down to attendee. And to recover from that, I'm going to reveal the artwork. So this is the proposal as, as drawn, with a number of elements that'll, the artist really wants to integrate location-specific elements, so there may be additional elements added. There, he is, intention is to have site-specific work and is really excited about the local iconography and how bold it is and the approachable style that he has that represents both the city's personality and its diversity. He has, can be quoted as saying, "The heroes of the piece are the birds," but he includes the art center, City Hall, Bay Bridge, Marina, Bay Trail, a bevy of our most noted sites, plus transportation, IATD, railroad, floor and fauna shopping, and maybe nearby shipping of the port. But he is, he's asked for community input before these are finalized images, and he's asked, will be hosting a special PAC meeting specifically at the site to get input on additional elements to include in the iconography. This is in the site context. You can see that trellis, and there would actually be panel wood attached to it, so it'll look a little different than it is presented here. The existing context has both the artist co-op right at the T of that intersection, this door that you see pictured here, to the brick top-left element opens right to look at this wall. Steelwave's fourteen fifty Sherwin is directly across, and then the building on which it is has these bays and walls that go all around the block in every direction, so mixed-use context. As this was presented to the PAC, neighbors residing in the art co-op, as pictured here, noted their concern about such a large mural directly kitty-corner, as it were, from their front door and visible from the windows, as pictured here. The PAC did consider those concerns, and part of the discussion on October seventh is making sure that with the trellis and how it stepped back there, that, that mural works in that context. And they, they did consider the review and decided to move forward with the location because of the connect, the visibility directly to Horton and the bike boulevard by the site was originally selected, and the park at the end of the street being developed, and that connectivity to the new bike pad bridge. There is a lot of new development that is occurring in the area. It's been alluded to, the eighty-four six Sherwin Williams, that Steelwave bike facility directly across from it. The, the bike through is kind of off Horton and, and not adjacent to this mural, but is immediately in the area. The artist has done work both in Emeryville and is, is known throughout Berkeley and Oakland for other works that are readily visible as you come over the railroad tracks and elsewhere. This is Lanespitter here in Emeryville, one of my favorite works right here, work including some of the other elements that have been identified as priorities within the Emeryville, both indoor and outdoor murals, temporary and long-term installations. This work in Florida is of a similar scale to what we were talking about on the building. The panel noted his prior professional body of work and the longevity of that work in their selection. The budget for this project is eighty thousand dollars. Predominantly, that's going to the artist's fee, but there are, there is a graffiti screening, screen on it, there is the rental of equipment, and that this budget will include the first three maintenance of the facility by the painter himself within this budget. This, this, each of these dates are probably a little wiggling, because of course, this is September thirteenth, not the first. But we are planning to go to the PAC on October seventh, five-thirty, at the site, and the public is welcome to that, and we'll be extending an invitation broadly, and certainly within the immediate area, for participation in that onsite workshop. And then the final design will be completed in a month, and then site preparation and work done in November. And, you know, with COVID persisting, it's nice that this is an outdoor site, and many community celebration could occur out of doors, and so that's anticipated. We'll nail down that date and report back to the council if you do proceed with this commission. What we're asking for from you tonight is both the, the acceptance of the resolution, and it should be noted that in addition to the contract, there is a license agreement with both the artist, which is new from our process in the past, and PNH Associates, and this is for a term that runs to at least November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and term was important to the PAC, and it is hoped that it can last longer. Are there questions? concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Amber. Do you mind removing or, yeah, the presentation so I can see everyone? Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions of staff or of the applicant? Vice Mayor Donahue, go ahead.
For the show-in street on the side where the mural is designed for, is the sidewalk going to be different than it is now? And are there going to be trees planted on that section of the street, on that side of the street?
My, I know that they've already done the site work across the street. I have not seen a change to the sidewalk on the side, but I cannot speak to the specifics.
That answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Does anyone know whether the Sherwin Williams project will affect Sherwin Street on the south side?
Charlie has his hand, and I think can answer that question.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Good, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Mark Donahue, and members of City Council, I'm afraid I don't recall off the top of my head, but I do know that the sidewalk on the south side of Sherwin Avenue on that block is being rebuilt and in fact has been rebuilt. So there is a wider sidewalk on that block face right now. Also, the block between Horton and Hubbard on Sherwin is considerably narrower than the next block between Hubbard and Hallack, and so there may not be enough room for street trees on that side, on the south side of the street. I, I really don't recall. I, I can check the plans, and hopefully I can get that information to you before this item is finished.
Please do that, Charlie, and let us know, and we will go to public comment and deliberate while you're looking. Are there any other specific questions for the applicant or for staff? Amber, could you give us the timeline again for the approval of the final art?
Yeah. In an interim process, the expectation is that it would be October seventh would be a PAC meeting with the elements decided kind of real time, and then I think the intention is just to have a staff review once that's resubmitted. If there is discussion or need in the meeting to have additional review, that would affect the timeline, but this is just assumed, that there'd be a staff review before the end of the month, October, and then installation within November.
Then what, what usually changes or is up for debate in these meetings, once, you know, we have a draft of a piece of art that could be, you know, a guide?
Certainly, it may be that the artist wants to respond to this, but I, I think what should be clear, and well, I would present at the PAC meeting, is we're not intending to change major color elements, the, the type of work that's presented, but there might be a different- but there might be a different bird species, or we wanted to highlight something that's really valued by the community, or there's an iconographic image that just feels like the gem to be hidden and be tucked in. So I think it's more of what is in the treasure hunt, but the structure and the aesthetic nature of the installation is not, I believe, under any expectation of revision.
Great, thank you. I did notice the changes between the draft phase and the final phase for the Joey Rose mural. So I think those were all improvements. So thank you for sharing how that will work. So at this time, I'd like to check in with the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted public comment electronically. And I'll remind the public that if you are joining us on Zoom, you may use the raise hand feature to be recognized, or you can press star nine if you're calling in on the phone. But now, the city clerk, are there any electronic comments?
None at this time, no.
Very good. And I don't see any hands raised. So I'm wondering, Madam Clerk, if you can promote the artist. I, I know I've got one question for the artist, and my colleagues may as well.
That's Nigel Sussman, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there he is.
Nigel, welcome. I am excited about this project. I think it'll be a great addition to the city. And do you want to just give us a one-minute preview of how you chose the iconography and the ideas that are going into this mural?
Yeah, sure. Thanks again for, for including, being, working with me, and I'm really excited to meet you all and collaborate with the city of Emeryville. And this project, I submitted a proposal kind of just based on my living in the Bay Area for the last 18 years and spending a fair amount of it in Oakland and Emeryville. I live in Berkeley now, but it's, this, a mural like this is an exercise in trying to embody the place in a, in the most universal way possible, which I think landmarks and, and food and, and animals are like things that everybody has a shared experience with in a place like this. It's part of our environment, and it's presenting it in a fun and inclusive way and trying to focus on the positive aspects. So I've kind of made this fun bird, I guess, it's organized geographically, but it's sort of a bird-based picture. And then that just kind of seems like an optimistic and kind of, and fun approach. I am open to, to feedback if my, as a muralist and illustrator, I do often work closely with my clients, and they provide very specific things that they want to, to display. And so I welcome input and feedback. And if there is stuff that's going to, that, that we need to change to make it everybody in the community as happy as possible, I'm down for, for any of that engagement.
Very good. So I, I'm looking at your website, and your Robin Hood cats mural is amazing. Big fan.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, it's really, really cool. The one thing I noticed in the draft submission is that there appears to be a seagull wearing gold chains, and I just, I just want to, you know, I hope you'll accept this suggestion with, in the spirit that it's given. I, I just don't want to step into the realm of cultural appropriation by having a bird with gold chains and kind of deriving from the hip-hop culture and African-American culture in the Bay Area when, you know, I don't know if that's in line with what the mural is about.
Absolutely. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to act, either by accident or intentionally or for any reason try to make anybody feel uncomfortable. So that's a really easy thing to, to change.
Well, thank you, thank you for just hearing that input. We'll leave the, the final tweaks of the design to the PAC and to yourself. But that's, that's my only reservation in what I saw tonight. I'm very excited to have another large-scale piece of art added to the city. You know, I, it makes me feel very good when we're able to do these things. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues to see if they have any questions or comments for you. Vice Mayor Donahue?
Would you have your design influence if you knew that there were going to be trees in front of it? Would that change your design? And what if you knew what the lighting was going to be like at night? Would that influence your design?
Those are both good questions. The lighting, probably. I, I actually, to hearken back to the earlier part of your conversation, I do actually know that, I had visited the site recently to kind of assess, because I'm figuring out, in anticipation of this installation, like, some of the logistics, and, and the sidewalk is finished, and there's definitely no trees on that side of the street. The other side of the street's not done yet, but that one, they were finishing it the day I was there. And it's nice and wide, and that, the, it actually continues all the way down, unlike in the photo in the example where it kind of has a car parked that butts up against the building. So now it's, it's more pedestrian-friendly, and, and I, and I did not see tree, trees. So I think that we're clear on that. As for lighting, it's the scale of it, it's hard to light something like that, and it's, it's just going to be natural lighting, and, and I don't know if there's going to be shadow or anything from the built, the new structures across the street, but I don't, the graphicness of the, the line quality of being bold is pretty forgiving with, it'll survive subtle light variations.
Would, would you be willing to look at the lighting design for the street and see if you can imagine what, when the new streetlights go in there, where the light will be coming from and the kind of color and the direction of the, the light?
Yes, if I, if I should, when that's in place, or I should, I should visit the site at night, which admittedly I have not done.
And, or also visit it at night, but also with understanding of where the future light fixtures on the street will be and how high, how high they'll be, the, the color of the kind of light?
Yes, that definitely a factor, because I want it to be enjoyable at all times of day. The people who see it at night are more likely the people who live there. So that's the, the most important. Because I, I don't want to influ, input something into the neighborhood that, that locals don't like. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Donahue. Member Medina, do you have any comments or questions? Nope? Okay, then I will check in to see if we can promote our planning director, Charlie Bryant, again, to see if he has any closing details that he could share with us on the improvement of that side of Sherwin Street.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fortunately, I too was experiencing some technical difficulties like the city clerk, but I did finally manage to bring up a document that I was looking for. And Mira has also confirmed to me that she does not recall there being trees intended for that block face. But it is actually across the street from the main Sherwin-Williams site, so it's not part of the PUD itself. Therefore, that block face is not shown in the PUD plans. It is rather one of the things that they're obtaining bonus points for, which is the sidewalk on the south side of the street. But I double-checked the conditions of approval, and it just says sidewalk improvements. It doesn't say anything about trees on that side of the street. So I think we're 99.9% sure there are not intended to be trees on that side of the street.
I can also add that in the presentation itself, I had took a snippet of the plans presented from Steelwave, and I don't know that they were packed.
Can you say that again, Amber? You got cut off.
There, there is a, there is conflicting, the, the mural, the, the imagery in the slideshow is from Steelwave, not from the Sherwin-Williams sidewalk improvement. Added to the picture, but, oh, no further.
Okay, thank you, Amber. All right, colleagues, if there are no further questions or discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion on the resolution. Okay, and I'll go ahead and second. So we have a motion by Member Medina and a second by myself. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, Councilmember Bouders is recused. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And before we get to item 12.3, can we promote Councilmember Bouders back into the room?
Yes. He'll be arriving momentarily.
Very good. There he is. Colleagues, do we need a presentation on this? This is item 12.3, League of California Cities 2021 Annual Conference Resolutions Packet.
Happy to wave a presentation on that side of it.
Are folks okay if we wave presentation on this? Good? Okay, very good. We're going to go ahead and wave the presentation on this item. And unless there are any questions from my colleagues, I will ask the city clerk if anyone has submitted electronic comment outside of the letter that we have in the packet for Mantra Kibbanga?
Uh, no online comments, no.
Very good. And members of the public, you will, you will be reminded that if you would like to speak on this item, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you're calling in, please press star nine. This would be the time to do that. And I see no hands raised for public comments. We'll go ahead and close public comment on this item, and we'll bring it back to council for discussion. So there are two resolutions in the 2021 League of City California Cities Packet. There's the one to, to demand cleanup or a tool to allow us to demand cleanup for train-adjacent properties, and one that would revise the way that taxes are distributed for online sales. So colleagues, I am presuming that you'd like me to attend the, the vote on this at the General Assembly. So I'm going ahead and planning on being there on September 24th, and I just want to see what, if folks have thoughts on comments. Although since I'll be there on the last day after everything has been through committee, but any strong feelings on how I vote on these issues? Member Medina?
Yeah, the Bravest Tax Line, there's been, like, everything over the years left for the year. There's been a bill, and legislators try to redo it. I think it's an incredibly, like, sticky issue.
Yeah.
So I mean, happy to let, go ahead and leave it on, but, like, I don't have that strong of feelings if I don't change the threat of from League of Cities, what's going to finally get one passed.
Well, there is, there is legislation that's sitting on the governor's desk right now, isn't there? That's kind of a prelude to, to this, that gets everyone to report where, what those jurisdictions would be that would be getting that money. So, you know. There, they, if, people seem to think there's forward motion on this. Any, anyone else have any ideas or comments? You know, we can, if you want to just leave it up to me, I'll definitely, I'll see where everyone's at on that day of, but it, it could mean more tax revenue for our city. In terms of the, the train property issue, does anyone have any strong feelings? Like, no, we should leave dumping on those sites. Like, honestly, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure what the arguments are, are against this resolution.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to support the second resolution there, the one related to cleaning train properties. I think that's appropriate.
Second.
Very good. And then as for the other item, do you want to leave that up to me?
I, I'll amend my motion. Mr. Donahue will second the amendment. I'll amend my own motion to authorize you to support the one and to leave it to the mayor's discretion as to how she wishes to vote on the other.
Very good. Okay, and then there's a motion by Member Bouders, a second by Member Donahue. I already called for public comment on this one, right? Yeah, I think I did. Okay, so we could go ahead and call the roll on this. Please, Sheri.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Very good. That takes us to item 12.4. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the regular meeting schedule of the Housing Committee and amending the 2021, 2022 local roster of boards, commissions, and committees. Can we go ahead and wave a presentation on this as well, colleagues? This is, the Housing Committee met and recognized that they were having issues with Quorum. So they wanted to go back to bimonthly, which, as a reminder, they were bimonthly for a time and then asked to go monthly. There was a lot of activity, I think, around our expenditure plan, so that made sense at the time. But I think this makes sense for this time. So if there are no questions, we will go to public comment. Sheri, has anyone submitted electronic comment on this item? They have not. Very good. And members of the public, if you wish to be recognized and you're joining us by Zoom, please go ahead and use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in, press star nine. And I don't see any raised hands amongst the attendees. So I will go ahead and close public comment on this item. So I'm going to go ahead and move this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
There's a motion by myself, a second by Member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That brings us to item 12.5. This is a report to the City Council of the City of Emeryville of recommendations made by the Parks and Recreation Committee for council consideration. Is, is Pedro here or someone?
Pedro is, Ty, if you wouldn't mind allowing him to speak, please.
We should be good to go.
Welcome, Pedro.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Yes, tonight we have a staff report for you for recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Committee. They have two recommendations that they've discussed in the May and June 2021 meetings. The first one is for the council to consider a project, the Stanford Park and Bowdrie Street, as a village green project under the CIP program, considering closing Bowdrie Street and the block next to Stanford Park to solicit community feedback and, and get timelines, sorry, and include as a future CIP project. The second recommendation is for the council to consider when city playground projects or open spaces are considered to look into nature play area and equipment. They really feel like the benefits of having nature play equipment in the city for children is a big asset, and so they wanted to recommend the council consider that for all future projects. And they included some information regarding some of the benefits of that. So we're asking council to provide direction to staff and future considerations as needed.
And Madam Mayor, if you could just step in and provide some additional context. This is a report from the Parks and Recreation Committee that is intended to be somewhat similar to the report that you received from the BPAC, sort of bringing forward those recommendations and giving the council the opportunity to direct those actions into whatever appropriate planning tool or, as Mr. Heman has mentioned, the capital improvement program, if you wanted to direct those actions to those other processes.
Very good, understood. Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? Very good. Understood. Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? And then a clarification, Madam City Manager. If we direct staff to put these recommendations through another process, that doesn't mean that we are approving or validating the specific ideas. It just means that we would reapproach the issues as they come up. For instance, if it went through the CIP process, we would address that at that time when we go through the natural arc of the CIP process.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. It would be helpful to frame any motion in that way so it's clear to anybody in the future, but that is right. And for example, with regard to the CIP, there is a process that it goes through prior to your adoption of it, including consideration by the Planning Commission for consistency with the general plan. So it would, anything that is added to it would have to go through that process.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Colleagues, any other questions on this issue? Okay, very good. We'll check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted any electronic comments, and I'll remind the public that you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine to be recognized if you're calling in. Sherry, has anyone submitted comment?
No, they have not.
Very good. And I'm looking out for any raised hands, and there are none amongst our attendees. So I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to my colleagues for deliberation. Folks, is there any specific route that you'd like to see these recommendations go? Member Bowers?
I think I'm going to say what Member Medina was going to say, but the first of those two recommendations is something we've actually already been discussing at a high level at Transportation Committee, so if we could just direct that to the Transportation Committee, Public Works Transportation. We have talked about that already in some capacity. Was that I speak or you, Ally, when I said that?
You got that.
Okay.
Very good. Member Donahue, did you want to make any comments?
Well, I think that the intention of the Parks and Rec Committee was saying, for example, if that one block of Bowdrie Street were to be made a part of the Stanford Park, that they would run it by the local neighborhood to get their feedback first. I think that was part of their consideration of the process, that they thought they needed some more direct neighborhood involvement. But of course, all the members of the committee did like that idea of having that be a part of the park.
I think that could be part of the process that the Transportation Committee is going to undergo for that. So I think that that feedback can be directed in that direction as well, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
And then as for the second recommendation for considering nature play areas, does anyone have any feelings about how to digest this into our regular processes? Digest, yes, I said that. Or incorporate it into what we're already doing? Member Medina?
I think the next time we update the Parks and Recreation Plan, we can incorporate that as a suggestion, much like we've incorporated BPAC recommendations into our planning act of transportation.
Okay. And does that make sense for staff?
It does, Madam Mayor. That would be the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan.
Very good. Do we need to have a resolution to move forward with these, with this direction?
If you'd like to make a motion that encapsulates the referral, the first one to transportation and the referral of the second one to the update of the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan, that would be fine.
And I will so move exactly what you said.
I second that.
All right. Any other concluding questions? All right. Sherry, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers? Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And Scott, you are our liaison to Parks and Rec, correct?
Yes.
Please extend our gratitude for those suggestions.
Okay, I will.
And that brings us to item 12.6. This is a resolution to set a public hearing date of October 5th to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's June 24th, 2021, denial of an amendment to a conditional use permit and design review permit for the redevelopment of the existing 30,000 square foot vacant building located at 4060 Hollis Street as an arts and cultural center and two signs. Folks, do we need a presentation on this? No? Okay, we are going to wave presentation, but thanks staff for being available to answer any questions. I will look to the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment.
I do have an electronic comment from Vicky Jo Sewell. However, I see that she's on the list of attendees, so if you would like to speak, Vicky Jo, raise your hand. Otherwise, I can read your comment into the record. And Ty, if you see her, raise her hand. Please allow her to talk.
Okay. She has raised her hand, so I'd like to take her first. We could do that, and then we see another hand raised as well.
Someone needs to unmute. Vicky Jo, please?
Yes. If you could read it into the record, I'd love it. Oh, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, here I go. Dear City Council Members and City Manager, if there is ever to be an Emeryville Art Center, it is going to need the support of the community. The center will need our participation for fundraising, membership, and volunteering. The latest design proposed for the art center gives us no reason to attend any events there, even a simple art reception. The so-called performance area provides no lighting or acoustics. Who are we expecting to perform there? The gallery space is too small with jutting sidewalls that will have to be torn out to install exhibitions because they are so limiting of the size of the artwork displayed there. There is no storage or workroom for the people that would install shows in the gallery. These would include lighting equipment, stands for artwork, paint, ladders, and tools, and we need a sink. There would be no office for art center staff. The studios planned are monastery cells with little lighting, no 220 voltage electrical, no sinks, and small doors. How will people get the artwork in and out or clean up? At the compound gallery, an artist can rent a studio for $300 a month with access to welding, wood, ceramic, and fiber workrooms. Who realistically would want to rent these studios? The proposed common work area will be a large windowless interior room with a polished concrete floor and a view of the doorways of the rental studio cells. Who will want to work there? What is the thinking around the jewel box? It seems to, it will be a hot box with way too much exposure to the sun for most artwork. Who is going to gallery sit this space? It is so separated from the main gallery. How will visitors even get in? Maybe the people working in the common area can escape here to get some light. The front of the art center is now located at the rear side of City Hall, while what the community and the world will be seeing is the same old flat brick building with some sort of mural painted on the sidewall at the back of the parking lot. Lastly, I'd like to point out the lack of environmental concern in this plan. Where are the solar panels? Where is awareness? Where is the innovation? This design is not self-supporting. Instead, it is a waste of money. We should wait until we can build something worth building, like the Center for Community Living or our new City Hall. We want something that will be a source of pride. We want an art center that plans for the future. We should be on the cutting edge and trend setting. That is the sort of art center people will want to be a part of. Sincerely, Vicky Jo Sewell. And that's it.
Very good. And we have another hand raised. Archana Horsting?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening, councillors, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Archana Horsting, and I am, I am the founding director 47 years ago of a current and active arts center in Berkeley, California, though I am a very much an Emeryville artist and person who lives here in Emeryville. So I've been watching this for, what is it, since 2006, when the city bought the land. It's been that long, you guys. So I wanted to tell you that from my decades of experience, there are many different ways that one can raise money for an art center or can bring income in, many more ways than this kind of WeWork idea of renting it out for people to work in, to do desk work of some sort. Those plans are seem to be not working out in the COVID era anyway. People don't really want to go to group settings to work in case there's any exposure. So my thought is that you, these plans were turned down for many good reasons. I wasn't at the Planning Commission, but they were probably very good reasons they turned them down. And I would hope that you would take people like Vicky Jo Sewell and Nancy Karp, whose letter I read and must already be in the record, I assume all of you have seen that, about why the, why the elements of the performing spaces aren't accurate. The truth is that when Orton Development got this project now three years ago, it seems to me, they haven't done really anything that I can tell. They've had their shot at it. They don't seem to be understanding what's involved in arts programming, because they don't have any kind of arts administrator on their staff. I met David Dial when they had David there, and he was incredibly kind and thoughtful, and I brought him over to my institute. I shared all of our income sources and how our income and expenses went. I didn't hide a thing. I told them what the difficulties were, but also how many possible ways there were between classes, memberships, art sales.
That's your time.
Oh, okay. So thank you very much tonight. I hope that makes some sense to you.
Great, thank you, Archana. Are there any other public comments? I don't see any hands raised, and you noted there were no electronic comments outside of Vicky Jo Sewell's, correct, Sherry?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time, I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. So the staff recommendation is to set a date of October 5th to consider this appeal, which we have asked for at a previous meeting. Does anyone have any discussion or motion? Nothing? So?
I think we should discuss this further in October.
Very good. Is that a motion on the resolution, Scott?
Yes.
And I'll go ahead and second. So Sherry, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that brings us to item 12.7. This is an item that's in conjunction with a previous item from our Mesa Agenda, which was item 7.2 earlier this evening. This is consenting to an agreement of employment between the Management Services of Emeryville, excuse me, Management of Emeryville Services Authority, also known as Mesa, and Christine S. Daniel as City Manager and authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors, that's referring to Mesa, to execute said agreement on behalf of Mesa. So we've already approved this resolution in a previous meeting, but just to state for the public that we are extending the contract of the City Manager for another two years, and that would include a 5% increase, but just my note that the City Manager has not had an increase in the past three years to give some context. And that is it. I would like to check to see if anyone has submitted public comment on this issue, or item, excuse me?
They have not.
Okay, and attendees, I will remind you that if you wish to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you're calling in, please press star nine. And I do not see any hands raised, so I will close public comment at this time. Colleagues, is there any discussion, or is there a motion on the resolution?
I'm going to resolution.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Medina and a second for Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Colleagues, that brings us to department head reports. Are there any department head reports tonight? I don't see any listed.
We have none this evening, Madam Mayor.
Very good, thank you. That brings us to future agenda item requests from council members. Does anyone have anything? Member Bowers?
I have one item. I received a communication from one of the recreational fish charter companies operating in the city of Emeryville regarding a new rule and regulation that has been promulgated by the California Air Resources Board related to changing out engines in very specific subset of commercial boats that would impact the business in the Emeryville Marina. The public comment period for this draft rule will open in October, at the beginning of October, and it will go for, I believe, 45 days till the middle of November. And they've reached out. They've also engaged several congresspeople about this, and the Coast Guard is very interested in this rule because of the potential impact it would have for this type of engine in boats with a certain type of material frame to them. And so what I'm asking is if, I'm happy to send it to the city staff, the specific rule and the communications, but if we could actually just have a agenda item in October to discuss, just to receive a report about what the proposal will do, to see if we want to send a letter during the public comment period to the Air Resources Board, that's my request.
Okay, I support that. So we have support for that. Anything else, Member Bowers? Nope. Anyone else? I would like my colleagues to consider an item that Mr. Bowers would have to recuse himself from. We've all received notice of enforcement of issues for the conditions of approval at the Sherwin-Williams site, and I wonder if my colleagues would entertain an item where we could discuss those enforcement issues and how to handle them in the future. Okay, Scott? Yes? Okay, so that's three of us, and Mr. Bowers is recused from that. So we have support to put that on a future agenda item, and staff will do that at a time that works. Is there a date certain that you'd like to set, Christine, or do we figure this out later?
Madam Mayor, I'd love to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit more about what you're looking for, and then we can figure out when that might be able to come forward.
Very good. If my colleagues are okay with me working that out with the city manager, then we will go ahead and do that. Thank you. Any other future agenda items tonight? Great. So that brings us to item 15, which is adjournment, and we will all say bon voyage and good luck to Mr. Bowers on the trip he is about to take. Be safe.
I will, I'm bookending my trip. This is the last thing I'm going to do. My technology gets unplugged after this meeting, and the first thing I will plug back into when I get off of my hike on the trail is the council meeting on October 5th. So I will look like whatever I look like 21 days from now.
Hopefully, you'll be in one piece.
Hopefully, I will survive my 300-mile hike from Canada to Wisconsin, yes.
All right. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.